President.
President.
Councilor Nett.
Present.
President Council Walsh absent. Council Field absent. There we have it.
All right, so what do we have today? We have a discussion here from Echo Works. And you wanted to do a little presentation explaining to us exactly what it is.
Yeah.
All right, that would be great.
All right. So thank you, Professor Pomos, Brian Lefebvre organizing this.
Thank you.
A special thank you to the school teachers that are here. Fred Williams, Lynn's third good mile teacher, who was the first teacher leading the project and run with it.
Thank you, Fred.
Danielle Tucci, head of Hampton, one of the district chiefs as well, volunteer coordinator, and by Mr. Club Advisor. She brought the Eco Brick Critical to her assistant, Melissa. And Anna Wilson, who is a teacher at Hampton, 612 Technology Integration Special Sales Teaching all plastic waste and effective methods for students. It's like the Lynn City Council first, you've got to get a project before it's like one year's degree. So my name is Nathan Gray. I'm the founder of the nonprofit Health Factory Foundation. We focus on affordable, innovative, sustainable homes and our flagship building materials, Eco Bricks. Eco Bricks is a plastic water bottle, patented non-recyclable plastics. There's a lot of examples here and there to come up in particular. I'm here to offer the city with a new innovative way of recycling for Lynn to be aware of education about our global plastic crisis and how to do your part in it. To be a large part of an environmentally friendly movement that brings our communities together and that can cost the city's waste management programs and protect the ocean and waterways in this coastal city. Our task to you is, what we're looking to ask of you is to look at third good marshal as an advert here, as a trial program that has proven successful, opening up and open up the opportunity for teachers and students to take upon eco working as well within all of Lynn's schools. Also to work with the DPW to establish a way to, establish a way to collect completed Eco Bricks from the community, possibly allowing residents to use existing collection bins in collaboration with the city of Lynn to build a planning department. Home Factory, Health Factory would like to identify a physical location for an Eco Brick home or structure because if we do not have a, the heads of these Eco Bricks, it really doesn't hold much value. So just comparable with the product that has been taken, the students that are getting involved are using it as a simple yet effective solution for plastic overburdens, bringing them home, bringing projects home, stock with their families, and really bring awareness to how much plastic they're using as a basis. And I'd just like to ask Danielle, one of the other teachers, to speak as well on the project.
Hi, thanks for having us. So I just want to share our experience with the students at our school and how we incorporate Eco Bricks. And basically it started with our student-led environmental club created a goal this year to reduce plastic within our district. And it gained attention from our superintendent who then supported our even more ambitious initiative of becoming a zero-waste district, which, and this is where Eco Bricks comes in as a large part of our initiative. So we decided to actually pilot it in our middle school because we had an interest with the team of teachers and they thought this would be a really great project for the students because they, they expressed what so many of us teachers are hearing nowadays from students, where students are asking, what can we do to prevent an environmental catastrophe? They want to take action and they really were on board once we explained to them what the Eco Bricks were and how you could reduce the plastic waste. And when students witnessed how much plastic could fit into just a 16-ounce bottle right here, we had a whole trash bed fit into this bottle. And they immediately saw the impact of their actions and how it was affecting in helping the environment but also their future. So we're donating the 16-ounce bottle Eco Bricks to Nathan Gray, his initiative to build a structure. But it also, the Eco Bricks took our school even to another level. We also sell eight-ounce water bottles in some of the schools. So the students are actually going to use those eight-ounce Eco Bricks to create eco furniture. They're going to build eco furniture themselves, chairs, desks, tables. So we were adding a lot of STEM and just innovation into the school using and saving money on the school districts. We're rethinking recycling within the district by creating a new recycling center that we can streamline this process easier for the whole entire district. And here with Lynn, we're, you know, we're looking to be the model school to incorporate Eco Bricks in reducing waste, but we see that Lynn can be the model city to reduce waste, rethink recycling, and build more sustainably. That's what I want to share. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you have any more questions, Danielle Johanna?
Well, I'm glad.
So just to kind of give a sense of the journey, we're in 14 different schools now. Teachers calling me on a regular basis looking to take on this project, teachers like Danielle, teachers like Brad, Johanna, and they're really looking for that step to be able to get involved and it's been quite an experience. It's not something I conducted, it's more organic growth for the project, leading it than leading my team. It's quite incredible. So I'd just like to welcome the chance to go to work with it. Yeah, I'd like to open it up to questions about Eco Bricks.
Now, if say third good marshal gets involved, begins this project with you, what are you looking for, a place to store the bottles, a straw? I don't know exactly what you're looking for.
Yep, so the kids build them in school as a, as a project. There's after-school clubs, a lot of private clubs to pick up on. So they would build Eco Bricks in school and after-school within the schools. And they use the plastics from their home, bring them in, use the plastics from the school, use those. There'd just be a short storage period until we come to pick them up. If you had the extra storage, it's helpful, but at the same time, we want to bring them in as much as we can because then we're going to put them all together. And it raises in our, in our location, which is four feet, might eight feet wide, they all get put together like this and become walls of the interior structure.
Have they used the bottle, like a water bottle in the home?
Yeah, that's exactly what it is. It's a water bottle, yeah, the water bottle, the straw, there's so many different plastics from your shower curtains to your, your vegetables that are wrapped in plastic, to your candy bar wrappers, to the plastic within the cereal boxes, every soft plastic that you can think of or inundated with it. So it's everywhere.
But can you use the Coke bottle as well?
Yeah. Yeah, Coke bottles, water bottles, 16 to 20-ounce bottles.
You're basically looking at filling it with the stuff that we can include in our recyclables, ignore the plastic bottles.
Exactly, it's a non-recyclable. So not only is it storing this plastic, it's cutting back costs of the DPW to go through the plastic that people are putting in the waste and, I'm sure, I can't see here, you can say better, you all say something on that, I don't know much of a nuisance with plastics being, I mean, we've been more to get rid of recycling, moving trash and that one. So that will help.
Isn't that great?
They would take these from the recycling and then put another use for them. Are these allowed to be in the recycling right now? Yeah, so that will look like that, all of the town to.
Now, can the cap still be slightly bigger than I did in the goosey class thing?
Goosey.
The class jumps me.
So, great question. On the, I know you're getting building toward the birthday in April. And I know we don't really have jurisdiction over the schools per se, that's a big, you know, that's what we, more the superintendents, but I think what we could do as a committee is recommend that we have a couple of spots, whether it's City Hall or the DPW within that sort of collection bin. Maybe the Health Department makes sense, perhaps DPW down on Mercer Street where people put deposit. And then you're looking for them to build these at a community event in April, is that correct?
Yeah, we have a third good marshal middle school, April 25th, from 10 to 4 will be within third good marshal middle school, doing Eco Brick building there, kids from third good marshal, and it'll help to teach others and other kids from other school districts. But as far as collection bins go, that is a great idea, any city buildings that we could put it in, we create these reclaimed wood, we set collection bins, we market them clearly and therefore they're completed Eco Bricks. We don't have the ability right now to take on all of the soft plastics because we just don't have the manpower to set them on ourselves, so we have to go to my home and the kids do it in school. I would think that being able to use the existing collection bins for recycling, for completed Eco Bricks may be a possibility of kind of put that out there, maybe we can coordinate somehow where that would work so all residents can recycle the same way they recycle their plastics.
What, use one of the bins as an accessible to evolve?
Yeah, or no, at home, so for the collections at home to be able to put the Eco Brick directly in there, it might be an option.
I just, I don't want to send a mixed message, like we have problems with people putting the wrong things in the bin and using it for anything other than it's designed for it is problematic.
Maybe we could create another bin.
Yeah, a more, some sort, you know, a brand on it or whatever.
Yeah.
The goal is to take it out of the recycling screen, you don't want to store it in the recycling bin.
Right, another collection bin of some sort.
Yeah. So that's hard to be able to, right? That's not, we wouldn't want, so waste management, those are costly, those toads are costly. We can't provide a third tow or anything like that. Oh, no, right, I'd actually have been in every house. But you're looking for a demonstration bin in the foyer, so you call.
We could start there. I mean, I'd love to see a collection bin in every home, but it would definitely be.
Yeah, we don't have the authority.
Yeah, right.
We're under contract placement.
Yes.
But people can do that on their own.
Yep, and bring it to their collections.
Home people, or those who are purposeful recycling, for this purpose, and then go down to Marshall or start saving things.
That would be great, if you could offer those locations and I could talk to local businesses and private sectors as well, and a lot of people would be willing to.
It's similar to where across the city, we have these overflow bags, sort of designated to be stores and things across the city. So I envision this in different areas of the city, kind of depository that are convenient open to the public when the role, whether it's DPW or ISD or Health Department, City Hall FOIA permissions, but you know, the school, you have to go through the superintendent with jurisdiction of the school department. You can get a kit to act or in that way, you know. We're not using internal in schools, but general public, it should be more around the city location, the city, I think.
That would be great.
Is that possible to choose something like that and have the block office or district that we're going with as a suggestion?
Yeah, yeah, I can certainly, I can certainly, that's one enough.
We could, we could establish some rules, often not going to collect it.
Yeah.
Call myself on it if it gets too full.
We have similar, you know, we have money barrels and we have all sorts of, you know, batteries and lots. Are you providing those a bit or is it something that you have for?
Yeah, I typically have been putting a three in a row for you on it just because I need to build it and have the guys put it together, you know, we could, we could talk about that. I do have, I can make a bit.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Would you support the initiative, would you evolve, maybe a, could you train them on, or could you work with Mr. Wall and develop three or four different sites in the city?
Absolutely.
For the short-term interim, and then if they requested this after Earth Day, the hour, then?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Okay. Good, thank you.
All right, thanks so much. Thank you, we'll share what our moments, you know, something that's kind of the past. That's a bit like, I don't know, like that.
Present.
President. Council Walsh.
Present.
President.
Present. All right, what do we got?
Discussion of 499 Boston Street, order that the Inspection Services Department render the property secure.
Why don't I, Mike, both speakers? So this is a problem property in the city and on February 11th, Ward of Hell voted for the property to be secured, vacated because it's uninhabitable. There's also been a number of tickets that have been issued for building code violations, for health code violations, for fire code violations. This has been an ongoing issue for a very long time. And so what we're trying to do now is secure the building. There are windows and doorways that are open and allows for trespassers to go in into the secluded area of the building and cause problems. And so from a public safety perspective, we're hoping to move forward and get ISD the legal authority it needs to board up this building.
Yes, it's becoming a tracked nuisance, there's no power, there's no gas, there's no water, there's no chance of anyone living in this building, the conditions in today. So we just want to enter upon the property, secure it, board it up, and make it safe and leave it. There's no attempts to make fix anything, just to secure it.
This property happens to be in my water supply today, it's bad. The windows are open, the doors, there's people just walking through for whatever reason. So I'm glad that we're taking the action, we're trying to help that, we may build over there. Any questions, comments, anybody?
No.
No question for me. Make a motion to approve.
Yes, second.
Can I make a motion to approve, to ask ISD to make the property safe and render it safe. All right? May I accept it in all favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, thanks for your help. Anything else?
Yeah.
All right, get a motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you.
President, Council Stavitt.
President.
President, Council Barton.
Present.
President, Council Chakutis.
Present.
President, Council Sear.
Present.
Okay, we have certified funds, order that the city control will be and is hereby authorized to take the following action. Certifies available funding amount $5,520 to the City of Lynn Finance Department by FY20 Firefighter Turnout Gear Grants.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Council Nett?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sear?
Yes.
Certifies available fund, an additional amount of $100,000 is allowed to the City of Lynn Health Department to fund the FY20 Substance Abuse Prevention Co-grant. Motion approved.
These are grants, right?
Yes.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Council Nett?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sear?
Yes.
And we have the orders laid over from the February 11th meeting, transfer the sum of $74,963 from the account of TRE expense to the account of DPW expense to purchase additional equipment, Bobcat with all accessories.
Motion approved.
Second.
Council Nett?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sear?
Yes.
Transfer the sum of $25,000 from the account of reserve expense to the account of CFO expense to fund a wage analysis report. Mr. President.
Mr. Slattery come to explain exactly what is plenty of cost. Thank you. You can allow him to do that.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors, committee members. For those of you who I haven't actually met in person before, my name is John Slattery and I have the privilege of having been appointed by the mayor to be the city side labor council. So I've been doing that work for the last two years. In terms of what we're requesting for the $25,000 transfer, we're looking for to be able to hire an expert who can do a comparative wage and benefit analysis for purposes of an arbitration, even though the arbitration hasn't been scheduled yet or on the way towards that arbitration with the fire union. Unfortunately, when it comes to negotiation, we've managed to reach an agreement with the teachers, with the police, we have tentative agreements with a number of the other unions, but the fire department and us remain apart. And they have, they petitioned for the JLMC in order to go to arbitration. That wasn't the city's decision, that was a firefighter's decision. With that, they have an expert. Their expert is Kevin Dacey. Kevin is assisting them in this case right now in obtaining the information that is important for him to be able to lay the foundation for an opinion report at, at the time of testimony at the arbitration. We're looking to level the playing field so that we can have our own expert who from the city side can do a comparative benefits analysis, a comparative wage analysis for purposes of having our own opinion at the JLMC should we have to proceed to the actual arbitration hearing. It's important to hire an expert at the beginning of the case, I've been doing this for 35 years. I've been involved in a lot of trials in the federal, federal courts and state superior district courts. I've hired many experts. Experts inform the attorney of the information that they need in order to friend their opinion. They make sure that you get the information they need to support their opinion. They assist you in negotiations during the arbitration, during the trial. They educate you on the expert subject matter, that's why you hire them. And they're important to be from the beginning of the case because like the firefighters do with Kevin Dacey, they have, we have to know what information he needs, what information he's looking for that supports his opinion so that he can have a proper foundation to have his testimony admitted into evidence. And during the 35 years I've been doing this, I always hire the expert, usually before I even file the case, because they're so important to the development of your side of the argument and they're so important to understanding the argument of the other side. So we're asking you at this point to level the playing field with, with the firefighters' union relative to having an expert, they already have, Mr. Dacey. And I did hear some discussion about whether Mike Bertino as the CFO could perform this study. I just suggest to you that that would be impossible for him to do. The quotes that we've seen from the experts during this case, they need at least three to four months to gather the information. There is external comparables that have to be done. These external comparables require them to get population, tax rates, per capita income, unemployment rates, tax rates for all of the various cities and towns that they can then look to gather and assemble to put the comparables together. That is a ton of work that requires a ton of commitment of time and effort. Mike works seven days or five days a week as the straight CFO. He has all of his normal daily activities to assemble, amass this information, and then to put it into a format that can be communicated both to the fire union and to, should we need to, the mediators at the JLMC. To do all of that, create the charts, is just a commitment of effort and time he would be able to perform his natural, his usual services. So I believe it's an important part to level the playing field at the, at the arbitration. It's also important to help inform our discussions with the firefighters in the hopes that we can avoid arbitration and reach a negotiated settlement. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Slattery, haven't there been studies like this done before?
There hasn't, I'm not aware of a recent study. Yes, I'm sure that there have been. Mr. Dacey, yeah, Mr. Dacey has in fact done it for the firefighters' union, probably, I was looking at his resume the other day, he's probably done it for the firefighters' unions or public sector unions for about the last, maybe 10 years or so. So for him to pull this information together is easy. He represents all of the firefighting unions in these cases. He has this in a, in a central database, he can pull the comparables, pull everything. For us, we have to have up-to-date comparables, we have to have up-to-date data and information. And so we have to go out and assemble this information. We don't have it in a data pool like the firefighters' expert does. So even though these may have been done in the past, I don't think the city's been involved in a JLMC action since 2016. And honestly, I looked for the report from 2016, it doesn't look like they had an expert report in 2016. It looks like they went in with the then CFO and the mayor trying to testify from various budgetary outlines. That just won't cut it and that's probably why they lost at that case, right? And I think they got, I think the judgment was for about 2.4 million against the city. And so you understand, when that judgment comes down under the statute, you have to pay that judgment within 30 days. So we're looking in this case to have our own expert who will assemble the information and he will assemble up-to-date current information that can be used and be deemed admissible for an opinion at this hearing.
Any other question? Mike, have you anything to add?
Nope, I think John said it all, you know, plus we want to make sure the report, if it's not internal, it's, I want to make sure it's unbiased, you know, unless the third party does it, just so, you know, it doesn't lean one way or the other. It's just all of the facts. That's not true, not in one way or another. When you have somebody do a report, you're telling them exactly what you want in that report.
Well, not, not with the experts, I've dealt with many experts. An expert has to take the stand, he's going to be subject to cross-examination on his methodology, his evaluations of the underlying foundation. If he can't withstand scrutiny on that by the city, by the firefighters' expert in this case, or by the firefighters' attorney, then his opinion would be useless. Most of the experts that I hire, in fact, all the experts I hire, I ask them for a straightforward opinion because in this, in this particular type of arbitration, it will help inform the city as to whether or not the firefighters' demands are within reason, and if they are, help to get a negotiated settlement. But more importantly, I want to be able to put him on the stand and not only utilize his information, but then utilize him and his information to cross-examine Mr. Dacey to see whether Mr. Dacey has arrived at an assigned value or whether he himself is rendering an unbiased report. So our position would be that we're going to hire an expert who will give an unbiased report on the basis of the comparables that he finds. That's, that's the, that's what we intend.
I'm, make a motion to approve.
You have second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council Nett?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
No.
No. Council Chakutis?
No.
No. Council Sear?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have the transfer of the sum of $104.90 from the account of DPW expense to the account of DPW prior year bills to fund the prior year bill.
Motion approved.
Second.
Council Nett?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sear?
Yes.
Yes. We have four statement of interest orders, which I'll read the full orders in council. But right now, I'm just going to read, having convened in an open meeting on February 25th, 2020, prior to the closing date, the Lynn City Council, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest forms dated February 14, 2020 for the following schools. Soul Anderson Elementary School for the replacement of the existing boilers. Lynn Vocational Technical Institute, replacement of windows and doors. Shoemaker Elementary School, replacement of existing roof. Pickering Middle School, replacement or addition to the building to address severe overcrowding issues, roofs, windows, boilers, and heating.
Any discussion or risk考虑? Any question?
Second.
Roll call.
Council Nett?
Yes.
Yes, Council Stavitt?
Yes.
Yes, Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sear?
Yes.
Yes.
Anything else? Nothing else, that's it? I'm looking to say?
Motion approved.
Second.
February 25th, call the meeting to order.
Roll call, please.
Council Field?
Present.
President, Council Hogan?
Present.
President, Council Ozy absent. Council Nett?
Present.
Present, Council Walsh absent. Okay, we have a new taxi operator, Aldeo De Jesus Baez Rivas. That's a lot of names you got.
So wish of the committee?
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, we have a ruling in favor. Thursday morning in the clerk's office, your license will be ready. Thursday morning after 8:30. Okay, thank you, thank you for coming.
And everything else we have is a renewal.
Okay, if we could take those as a whole, we have a.
Civil.
So moved, thank you. What's the wish of the committee?
Motion approved.
We have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
I oppose, we have a ruling in favor.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a second, all in favor.
This is, good job, thank you.
So I can leave a lot of this with you, a lot of this is sub-explanatory, can be reviewed, kind of where they are, there's security systems, I'm sure you guys are very familiar with the CCC regulations as far as access control, video surveillance, intrusion alarms, things of that nature. Green Butterfly is, you know, very aware of these standards, not looking to cut corners, looking to be very, looking the right way. Security definitely being a number one priority as far as the customer experience. Do they have experience on the industry?
Yes, so Sarah has family that is in California right now, operating, you know, different type of license types.
Yeah, so I have a family that, or they have like a grant farmer license, or they probably, they do cultivation, manufacturing, transportation, and. Yes, so Sarah Matt's family that is in California right now, operating, you know, different type of license types.
Yeah, so family that they already have like great form of license, or they probably need to cultivation, manufacturing, transportation and retail. So plus we have a, already company in person that working with us as consulting and we have a company, an entity company already on paper, everything. So we kind of have set up all the requirements for us or move quick as soon as possible for us. And I mean, the experience with this area, I'm pretty sure we don't have any problem with that.
Yeah.
We have all necessary resources for that.
Yeah, as far as that is concerned, they've gone through the EIC process, they've vetted their, still that they have, you know, agreements in place to force supply. They have, you know, the capital to do this right now. So if you turn over to the last page, page 16, it's kind of a goal for tonight's meeting. You know, as I said, we're not looking for a recommendation to go to city council because there are eight post community agreements in the city right now. We're not looking to change zoning amendment here tonight and ask for a ninth license. This is kind of just a, you know, preliminary discussion for them to say, you know, they're looking into the city, they want to be a part of the city's future. They see this as a great opportunity. I know that there are talks with some people that may have licensed it today to see if, you know, if there's an opportunity for a partnership or if, you know, they may transfer it over or if it ever came to it and the city was successful with eight, maybe, you know, they want to be first in line for license number nine. So any other questions, I'll turn it over to Terry Saret or myself or any of the gentlemen here with us tonight.
Okay, I, I know that it's a challenging site, no question, especially with the parking and the city received a $59 million grant to do a lot of infrastructure improvements on along the roadways. And one of those stretches is Essex Street from Eastern Ave all the way down to Joyce Street. And as we've been talking about, the Western Ave stretch and all, there may be cases where street parking that exists now in some of those locations may not exist once this project gets rolling and is completed. You know, it's been talked about, lanes, bus lanes and, you know, so I don't even know if I, if I would count on the street parking at that site, at Essex Street.
Yeah, they know they need additional parking. It's something that we discussed and, you know, where they are today, everything's kind of proven there because, you know, nothing is 100%. We don't, we're not here tonight looking for the seven, eight licenses. So they're taking the steps necessary to be ready for whatever comes their way.
And I'm sorry, regarding the parking, so right now we are in a process that kind of trying to see if we can, maybe, we already bought the Rochefell property, so, and right now, the next property right next to that is for sale and across the street, there is a parking lot, kind of, not a parking lot.
With a lot.
Yeah, no, no, right across the street.
It's, it's a residential union.
It's a residential.
Where it would be.
It's a kind of fenced lot. There is only one kind of small yard from there. So we are in a process for trying to negotiate either lease or buy that property and for that is a lot of parking space a lot there. So, I mean, I believe that's, that's the, that's not a problem. I mean, that's something that we can resolve. Even, and that's a lot of parking, like maybe 20, maybe even more.
Members of the committee, you have any questions?
No, I, I, Mr. Chairman, if I could, we did meet with the individuals, with their attorney, vetted them. They definitely have the financial resources to do this and they would hire, as you stated, consultants that have experience in this. So I just wanted to pass that on to the committee.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Sending us the information. Thank you. Have a great night. Okay, no other business? What is the wish? Wish made, seconded by.
Seconded.
Thank you very much. Might as well hang, right?
Yeah. Clucci absent. Counsel Walsh absent. Counsel Field.
Present.
Present.
Okay, one item on the agenda is for the Mount Olive Church on Johnson Street to use the lot on Johnson Street for a cookout.[1619.83]